We'll do the minutes first. Alright, so with a little bit of delay, I apologize that we will, I call the February Planning Board Meeting to Order. I'm gonna jumble, juggle the agenda here a little bit, and first we have the January Minutes. Did everyone have a chance to look at them? I believe there was just a couple of typos sort of corrections that went around. Does anyone have anything else? No. So can I have a motion to accept the January Minutes?
Still moved.
Second by Kate. All in favor?
Hi.
All opposed?
Hi. I'm sorry.
Let's show the minutes were accepted for January. Still don't have one. But alright, so did everyone, there was a sample resolution that went around, a very rough draft. And and I guess we start off by just I guess talking about that. Let me get it up here. Does everyone have it available to them? Maybe Tricia, can you put it up on the screen, please? Again, this may change quite a bit by the time it comes to vote for those watching at home. But he there was a couple of typos sort of thing, but the main difference then, what has to be worked upon that we have to discuss is coming off of, we, the advice that we received from our attorney as far as what the law is and what the what the statute says and what the case law as, as much as it is, in the records are, tell us, inform us that this application of this type of entity does not really fit into the major home occupation definition as it stands by our code and by the rulings that have come down from the state courts. Part, but in my opinion, now, I mean, again, that's, it's up to the board to chew this over and figure out where we're gonna go with this. In my opinion, the collection of the goods that are given away and, and that whole portion of it is, is fine. That fits within the definition. There was some issue with maybe some freezers on the porches or stuff, but that in my mind is somewhat minor and, you know, people around here have freezers and things on their porches and but the distribution of operation just does not seem to fit within that definition. Being the number of people, the, the fact that it's outside, the fact that you know, it causes this traffic increase in the area and, you know, this obviously brings up a hard what would you say, you know, it's hard, it's hard because of the good work that this organization does for the community. That being said, whenever any application comes to us, we have to interpret it, make decisions on it based on how the law is interpreted, how it's written. And we, whether that is a big huge corporation, whether it's a homeowner, whether it's a small business. In my mind, that doesn't change, and whether it's a charity, it doesn't change how we go about our business. That being said, with COVID going on, you know, I think there is some latitude given to us while this emergency is going on to work with the community in order for important functions to happen. So anyway, I'm gonna, let's open it up to the, to the board. I guess, if you, Tricia, can you scroll down to the part where and by the way, we have noted the, that it's Lisa's eyes, not Mary's eyes, and we will get that fixed. There's also the typo where it says State Road. Yeah, where it says Main Street's a state road when it's a county road. So again, this is a rough draft and is obviously be fixed up by the time we get to close the voting on it. Go down to where we talk about basically the restrictions or conditions. Keep going. Oh, wait, slow down, slow down. Go back up here a little bit. Actually, let's look at these findings of fact here. Does anyone have? So, not for profit. Okay, go down a little more from here. No, there's a, keep going a little more. There was something on here about facts about, oh, okay, the food pantry has been operating once a week from Saturday mornings. I, I think we have to tweak some of this language about, because we were, we had testimony in the public hearings and such where, you know, we heard it was, you know, a little bit wider window on the Saturdays. There's some flexibility involved. There's some, you know, obviously the deliveries that happen on other days. So I felt that we probably need to flesh out some other to widen that up as far as these facts are concerned. Alright, keep going down. Slow, okay. There's the whole state road when it's a county road. Oh, where is the one? Oh, okay, the food branch, I actually, this section right here where it says the food pantry at one time distributed or either prepared onsite, obtained offsite meals. If I could actually, I had a question for the applicant, Mr. Zeiss, if you could tell us, is that accurate? That you used to give away prepared meals, but now you do not?
We still get prepared meals from restaurants which we give out.
Okay, so you get prepared meals that are given to you that are already prepared and that, that you proportion and then give out, or is it already proportioned before you got, gets to?
Most of the time they're portioned out. Sometimes we portion them out, but I think some are already portioned out.
This section needs to be fixed because that's not accurate. Alright, thank you. If you, Tricia, if you, can you keep on scrolling down and actually just hold them one second because I have to wait, what?
Chris, can you resend the link to Vicky?
Yeah, that's what how does she want? She wants it on email? Do we know? Alright, Tricia, can you send that to Vicky? Hopefully Tricia's doing that. Alright, back to what we're doing here. There's no incidents or problems. Okay, it talks about the police department. They actually also observed on Carla Terrace being known, so we can maybe even add that in there, that there was no issue with the traffic on Carla Terrace on 16 there. Anyone, by the way, any of the board members, please speak up if you guys are seeing something as we go through this here that you want to discuss further or point out. Tricia, can you scroll to the next section, please? Alright, let's see, applicants, alright. Okay, alright, so now here's where we get into the what, so let's talk about this now, the definition of a major home occupation. Hold on one second, Vicky's calling me. Hello, Vicky. Okay, sorry about that. Alright, back to what we were saying. Okay, so now if we look at this definition of, of a major home occupation, where I feel that it runs, where the operation runs across the definition here, or counters to the definition is you can argue about the, does not change the residential character, but does not have any exterior evidence of such secondary use other than a sign and where customers, clients, or sales representatives enter the premises. And Peter made a good point when we discussed this with attorneys, you know, what does that mean entering the premises? I mean, entering the property or entering the building and in which not more than three non-residents are employed. But then when we looked at those, the case law examples, it seemed that any sort of major evidence of a business going on on the property, like saying, having landscaping trucks parked all over the place or other equipment, or lots of people coming in or does not giving that evidence to people that there's a business happening there beyond someone just walking in the door and door shuts and they do business inside seems to go across what this definition says. So I, I'd like to really hear from the board, you know, beyond me just pontificating about that. Does anyone else feel the same way, feel differently? Raise your hand or whoever wants to speak up.
I, I, I think that given the circumstance of this pandemic, that, you know, we just can't really go by the clear, the, the close definition of this. You gotta like let up a little bit and, and, you know, if we're gonna allow this to happen, then we have to say, well, it's sort of a home occupation, it's sort of a major home occupation, but it really is only for like several hours on one day of the week. I mean, even that makes me think that it's not really a major home occupation. So I mean, I would just say let's go to how we're gonna define this, what we're going to say can and can't be done, and if somebody wants to say, well, yes, well, that's a major home occupation and someone else will say it's not, that's not the point. The point is, we want this activity to go on. We want it to be done safely and we're doing the best we can to accommodate that.
I also wonder what, so what is somebody who has, you know, works on cars? Or is that also like a major, isn't that a major home occupation? I mean, that you can see, they have cars parked in their driveways.
I would, I would, I would say under this definition, that would probably not be a major home occupation. That would be outside this definition.
But isn't that what we in the past, when we've done major home occupations, like behind the high school, was anyone on the board during that?
Yes.
Oh, hi, Vicky.
Behind the high school or like, you know, Richie Pelletier, like people have home occupations, major home occupations at their homes here, and you can see they're not hidden inside their homes.
Or landscaper who has their stuff around their house.
Well, that's, that was the, the case law we looked at. That was the exact case, was a landscaper that had multiple pieces of equipment on his property and they rule, and the state ruled, the court ruled against them.
Yeah, but we have, we have several in, in town. I mean, that's, you know, that so how do you, what, what do we do with them now?
Yeah, are they by definition a minor home occupation and we don't even define that?
No, we do, minor home occupation is defined in the code and that's definitely, you know, if you have people coming to your premises to do business, if you have any clients, as soon as you do that, you're not a minor home occupation anymore, you're a major home occupation.
I would also say that anytime except during those two hours during the week, you would not know that there's anything in, at the house.
Yeah, I think that's an important distinction from the cases, which, you know, whether you're a landscaper or a car repair person or the cases we saw is somebody has a lot of equipment stored in the property presumably 24 hours a day or maybe less when it's out, out doing the work, but here we have two hours a week of cars of, you know, half a dozen, a dozen, 25 maximum. I haven't actually heard any evidence that there's as many as 25, but maybe one day of particular need, there was 25, and it's two hours a week. And other than that, I mean, I think the issue of if anybody's making deliveries via Carla Terrace, they can be, they should be turned around or there should be signs saying go around to North Main. But, you know, I, I don't know if this is a conflict, but I personally have delivered stuff to the Zayas's for the, for the pantry. You know, just a bag of groceries. I pull into the driveway, there's never anybody there, usually not even the Zayas's. And I put it on the porch and I back out because you can't turn around and never hit anybody, nobody's ever hit me and off I go. And I just, it's such a minor intrusion you know, on everybody anywhere nearby. Just the other day, two days, yesterday maybe, I took my wife to the drugstore to get a COVID test and their cars lined up on North Main, sticking out into the, you know, beyond the white line into the traffic lane a little bit. You know, who, who can, you know, that's a legitimate occupation, but they're parking in the road. Well, you know, so what? You know, these, these are, that's a relatively minor inconvenience. Nobody complained, cars went by, they go around and people get their COVID tests. It's a necessary thing and, and feeding people is pretty necessary also. And, you know, if we're not doing a good enough job of anywhere else in the entire town, then, then there's clearly a need for this sort of thing.
Right, but it's also coming on us, you know, I mean, then it's on, incoming on the town board to change the code.
Well, as I say, I
Something of, of this, I don't wanna say magnitude, but this intensity, operating out of a, out of a residence. Now, again, I separated, like you said, Peter, I definitely agree with you. I feel the collection of the goods and that portion of the operation would fall within this very easily. You know, someone pulls up with some donations, goes inside, puts it inside and leaves. It's, I just, when you come to this you know, the distribution on, on the on the weekend there where I feel like it starts to exceed what they're talking about here.
Well, I, you know, I mean, I mean, we're getting it, I, look, I'm, I'm all in favor of not altering, you know, we're not, we don't, we're not authorized to alter the zoning code. I get that and I don't want to, but I'm trying to interpret it in a reasonable way. And, you know, when I drive in, I don't actually enter the house. I, donations are left on the porch. I'm, I am as outside as anybody picking up food would be. The only difference being is that there's nobody there to greet me because nobody needs to hand me anything and I don't need to hand anybody anything. But, and, and I don't go out via Carla Terrace because there's nobody behind me. But if I did have to go out through Carla Terrace, I mean, I would say, well, there's a driveway there, it's a legal driveway. It's just, it's hard to, the other thing is that exterior evidence of such secondary use, you know, again, these things get construed by courts and in each case, there is some kind of visible permanent storage of something of some significant size, namely landscaping equipment on the premises. And cars, you know, cars going through, you know, query whether that is what, just because people are outside when they do business with with Willow Roots, you know, why does that change it? I mean, just because if they got out of their house and went inside the house and picked up their goods, would that change anything and why would that be better? That, that's, that's sort of, you know, I, I think there is a way to construe this as meaning that people, you know, when you're not storing stuff or have any visible round the clock or, and round the day and round the week storage of equipment, that this isn't what was intended by the statute. Wish we have a town board member somewhere nearby. I don't know if he or she is, it's a she in this case, is allowed to opine on the law. But we, you know, as I say, we don't have much to go on, but the case about the landscaping equipment, it seems to me is distinguishable.
That's a good point. But, I mean, so what happens if it was a like a weekly garage sale kind of thing? Someone had some sort of business where they were selling things and they had tables set up and people coming through, like have like a little flea market every Saturday.
Well, do we have people getting individual flea markets when they want to have a garage sale and what's the difference between with that? The other thing I, I wonder about, is this a business at all? It's not a, it's a, it's a charitable operation.
I think that's what the problem is, right? The, the major home occupation typically is, is like what Warren said, is that a doctor or a lawyer or a seamstress who works on a house and, and a food pantry isn't, isn't a typical operation that someone runs out of their home. But, but I agree also with Dick that under, under these circumstances and, you know, this is a once in a century kind of pandemic or that, you know, the statute doesn't clearly say you can't do it either. I, so I, I think we all, to me, I think everybody would agree that it's a good thing and, and we should, I, I agree with the requirements that, I don't know if Michael or Warren did this, to have these restrictions and maybe take a look at it again in a year. Because the statute doesn't, it's not clear one way or the other, right? This is, this is difficult. It's about, I think we can hang our hat, you can say yes, it works or no, it doesn't work. It's not clear. The statute isn't clear enough for us.
My two cents, I mean, I sort of already made my quasi-legal argument. I don't want to repeat myself and take everybody's time, but there are gonna be poor people in Pine Plains when this pandemic is over. There were poor people before it started and they're still gonna be here. And there may be more of them because, you know, just suddenly recover from a pandemic and get a full, nice paying job back and are able to feed your family. And, you know, I am for one, I'm very thankful that I'm not a person that needs the services of Willow Roots, but these are, these folks are our neighbors. You know, they're fellow townsfolk and they have needs and, you know, it's not their fault. And as it, you know, I see a way to construe this law as not intending to ban this kind of charitable activity. It's, it's not a business as I see it. I realize it's a, it's a use, it's unquestionably a property use, but again
If we get into, if it's a you, I mean, then, then it's definitely not in the code. That's, that's like, you know.
Well, no, it's, it's a, it's a non-residential use, the, the home occupation is, it doesn't say it has to be profit-making, but it's a non-residential use. And I don't know what the meaning of clearly incidental to use of the dwelling for living purposes is. Why is a lawyer's office clearly incidental to a residence or a doctor's office? And why, why should there be a distinct, this is where I got into my enter the premises question last time. Why should this distinction be, is that if you go inside the house for a minute or a half hour for your appointment with your lawyer or your doctor or your dentist be different from, from instead of going into the house, driving by and picking up some food for your family? I, I don't see why one is the kind of, they each provide exterior evidence of the use, namely there are, it's right in the statute that customers, clients or sales representatives enter the premises. And usually premises frankly are property to me, not, not just the building, it's, it includes the property. So they're entering the premises and, and leaving. And they're just not going inside a building to, to conduct their business. So I don't see why that's, it's a reasonable distinction that any, that the law statute is making. I don't think it's making that distinction.
Well, except the whole clause about the exterior evidence.
Well, that's what I mean, no, the exterior evidence, when a lawyer or doctor has patients come in, there's exterior evidence that they're driving into the driveway and staying there for a while. And there's nothing in here that says that you can't have two or three people waiting for their appointment with their doctor in the Zayas's driveway if Zayas was a doctor. So I just, as I say, the exterior evidence is people coming to the house. And to me, a lawyer, doctor, et cetera, has just as much exterior evidence of what they're doing as this does. Maybe there could, a lawyer, a lucky, a lucky lawyer could have 20 clients in an hour.
It's definitely like all the activity out in the driveway on a Saturday is, I, I would argue is definitely a little different than just a couple of clients waiting around.
Right.
It's, it's a little different, but isn't
Our zoning code doesn't address this situation. Obviously it didn't occur to people. So perhaps we should proceed to work out the permit and then advise the town board that they may want to review this and do some, an additional section of the zoning law to address this sort of a situation.
I think that's what, I, I agree, and I think that the, you know, revisiting it in X number of months, whether it be six, eight or 12 months, whatever we decide will allow the pandemic, hopefully, to let, obviously, like you said, I think Dick said, you know, or maybe, maybe Peter said it, that, you know, this, the need is gonna outlast the pandemic, but at least the you know, possibly the contact precautions and that sort of thing that make that kind of drive-through situation maybe not as necessary. Additionally, you don't know, I mean, this could actually grow or not, you know, the, the demand may increase or decrease. You know, I, I definitely, I do know having some sort of period where we revisit this and see how it, how it's been going and what, how it has changed the character, et cetera, go through the criteria.
Yeah, it's certainly true that if we give the, give a year, the town board can do something too, which would be nice, but putting that aside, as I say, I don't I don't think the COVID contact rules would change the character of this because first of all, except for the number of people, as I understand, it was operating the same way. I don't see why the Zayas's need to have people come into their house to get food in order to comply with this definition. It just doesn't make any sense to me.
It complicates the distribution as far as like, you know, that's why they have the kind of like the drive-through, why it became such a I don't know, what would you call it? Attractive use of having this kind of outside market. I mean, you're right, like, well, how would it change? Well, it would be easier for them to use a different location for one.
Well, we're, well, you have to, that's, you know, locations cost money.
Maybe, maybe not. Depends what, if there's another organization that's willing to help out. But I'm talking about as far as just for the distributing, for just for just distributing the goods, not
I just, I would think they would have stepped up already, but anyway, that, I mean, that's certainly, sorry about that, folks.
If I can comment, I, I, I looked at the code and I've read the I read the resolution as well and I'm waiting for somebody else to bring this up. I feel like we're just hitting the mark with the major home occupation. Every letter that I read from residents of Carla Terrace Pioneer Drive, North Main, people who were concerned are concerned about the use of Carla Terrace. They're concerned about the actual drive-through. And maybe I'm misreading this. It seemed like the only reason the question came into why Lisa Nelson even had anything in their home was the use of Carla. The use of Carla Terrace. So, I mean, it's been touched on, talking about this maybe not being the most appropriate. Maybe mitigating something as far as safety concerns for Carla Terrace. I've driven on there a couple of times in the past month, there's no stop sign, it's a yield sign, there's no slow children sign, it is a narrow road compared to a lot of the roads in town. It's an awkwardly laid out cul-de-sac, not a full cul-de-sac. So I can understand the safety concerns, but maybe that's where the aim should be, which I don't even think is necessarily the purview of the planning board. Maybe it is.
Well, we can't dictate. Things with the town road, but we can. Dictate what, like at the end of the driveway there, they could put up some signs, you know, slow speed limit, something. You know, as well as require them to have somebody there directing traffic or keeping everyone to. To keep it slow or something like that.
The evidence is really conflicting on whether that's even a problem, you know, it's okay, sometimes there are. The, our resolution says as many as twenty-five, I could tell you, I parked there the Saturday before Christmas for. The last fifteen minutes of the distribution and. I think about, nobody came out for the first, no, I was there for half an hour and that for the first fifteen minutes, nobody came out. Then one SUV came out, which was the SUV I'd seen in the driveway when I drove up north Maine and the rest of the traffic was Carla Terrace traffic. And nobody was driving too fast and it seems to me the fact, the absence of a stop sign on Pioneer is more of a hazard. For any driver or bicyclist careening down Pioneer expecting people to stop, but it's not a problem for Carla Terrace people. Just because people don't have to quite stop, you can't go very fast around that corner, it's a sharp turn. So I just, I don't see, I mean, I, I sympathize with residents who have more traffic than they're used to, but. You know, this has been going on for a while before, even before COVID started, I think.
Well, the thing is with that whole driveway situation, it's really not a factor in it. They have a driveway permit. That's the end of the story, there's a driveway, a valid driveway permit onto Carla Terrace, whatever the Zayases decide to do with that driveway as far as. Connecting it to their front driveway or using it for their personal use, obviously, you know, any of the. Businesses or whatever that are operating there, you know, we have the purview to dictate rules about it, but. You know, that's their driveway and they are a resident of Carla Terrace as much as the other people are. Their property butts a public road, there's, you know, there's no right to, for anyone else on that street to dictate how another person on the street uses the road. Beyond. The traffic laws that exist, I mean, I, I don't, it's really, in my mind.
Emphasis on a public town road, it is a public town road.
It's not, yeah. So that whole portion of this whole thing is just, in my mind, is just not relevant to what we're, especially not relevant to what we're looking at. All right. So, well, let's, let's keep making our way down the. The resolution here, Tricia, thank you. Finding that is used cable, joining around the screening. Okay, keep going, go down to the next one, all right, slow. Oh, this, all right, well, this all is going to take us to make sure it, look at these parts of the code. Obviously, we're not looking to vote on this tonight, or, you know, maybe next month we'll be ready, we'll see. Okay, so now let's go down to the decision section. Okay, let's see here. Again, the hours of operation, this makes me a little concerned, I, I know he does address in here something about the before and after. Hours, but that window seems pretty. Somewhat tight to me. I believe they actually start at eleven. And go to one anyway, but I mean, that's no big deal, but. Yeah, I worry about creating this situation where you have. Very super specific rules where, where, oh, people start saying, hey, you know, they, they were there at nine or they were there at three. Again, obviously, if it starts turning into a much bigger operation with number of cars is what the really. Is the, is the determinative factor in my mind, not necessarily the hours.
You know, I mean, that can be dealt with by me saying limited to two hours a week. Within the hours of nine and five or nine and four on Saturday only. And they can pick, they can pick any two hour window they want. And if, you know, convenience of whatever people using it or whatever the reason they decide to make it. When I went, there, it was supposed, I thought before Christmas, I thought it was ten to twelve. Or maybe it was even nine to eleven, actually, because I was, remember, I think I was there at eleven o'clock from eleven to eleven thirty.
Mike, can I address that?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, I'm not Mike.
Yes, we distribute from eleven to twelve, so I understand the window that you guys are discussing, that the board is discussing. And language to, you know, one day a week, I, I, I did mention how based on weather. And other factors, sometimes we have done on a Sunday instead of a Saturday, so I would appreciate not having that restrictive. Day of the week, but I certainly understand once a week, you know, is, is reasonable.
Alright, so you're saying Nelson, that it's only one hour a week that you actually distribute from eleven to twelve normally?
That's the distribution, but then the volunteers come, maybe ten o'clock. And if, we tend to, we've been finishing on time, but yeah, we make deliveries, but, so I don't know, two and a half, three hour window.
I see what you mean, yeah, the, the operation includes.
Like I mentioned, yeah, I don't want someone, you know, if you say, you know, one thirty and, and one thirty-five, there's someone there, I really don't, you know, I don't want to have to. Deal with that, you know, with what happened with the tax business.
And, you know, the thing is, is that we do a bulk of our distribution, believe it or not, is for people that don't have cars. Nelson and I spend over an hour loading up the car, volunteers helping us and they leave and then we actually. Go to the houses and drop our food for people who can't have, either have disabilities or no car, so we're not finished on our ends. So sometimes two, two thirty, because we not only bring the food, we socialize, we ask if they need anything. And so our day is kind of long.
Exactly, that doesn't affect color tires or the traffic.
No, but so I just want you to know, like, so it is longer, um, the only time we would, we've changed a date. And, and I have to say, the people know they're, they're in and out at one hour, they're really good about that, they know that we start closing up and start delivering. The only time we had to make it like for say Sunday was if there was a storm or it was pouring, like a snowstorm or rainstorm, I don't want the volunteers out like that. You know, we'll tell everyone, listen, let's just make it for Sunday, I don't want to miss a week, and so that's how it goes.
I, I can't see the rest of B, but it seems like what Warren was trying to say here is that the pickup should be between twelve and noon and the people. The volunteers that are going to work there can come at a reasonable hour time before or after. So, I don't, I don't see the rest of B.
Yeah, if, Tricia, can you scroll down?
Yeah, to operation and closing same.
Right, so I, I think we weren't, I guess, I agree with, we can limit the, the people driving through for two hours, whatever, two hours. I guess Nelson said they did, what, eleven to twelve or, you know, we could do. What, the volunteers could be there ahead of time to get everything ready and then after to clean off.
But I like how Peter did it so that, you know, it's one day a week as opposed to.
Right.
One day a week for roughly two hours plus reasonable setup and, and close. I'm seeing a problem with C from what Nelson said earlier, and I don't see that that should make a difference in. Any appearance of the use of the property, the issue of meals prepared on site, Nelson said he gets meals from restaurants and distributes them.
Well, I think what Warren was worried about there is the. The permits permitting that he talked about with the health department.
Yeah, but isn't that more if, if you're actually trying to run a kitchen on site, which, I mean, I, Nelson can chime in here, but. If it just said no meals should be prepared on site as part of the food pantry operation, leaving open the distribution part.
Exactly.
And preparation, preparation means using a kitchen to cook as far as I'm concerned, it doesn't mean that like if. I was about to say Stissing House, R I P. But if the Spud Shack wants to give, say, has a bag full of fifty cooked burgers or fifty raw burgers for that matter. Is, it's not preparing him to divide him into one burger servings and to hand them out, so.
Either, but I worry.
Well, so, so there's not, to me, there's, there's no distinction, there should be no distinction between distributing. Something that Spud Shack contributed to Willow Roots, that's on their menu versus something I contributed to Willow Roots that I bought at PEX. I don't see the difference.
Well, I mean, just playing devil's advocate here, I guess, but when you start. Like, say you have a tray lasagna and you break it up into individual portions and put it in a bunch of containers and. You know, you're dealing with food safety and cleanliness and, you know, that is, I assume. What then brings the health department or whatever permits that. Warren was concerned about.
Well, I'm not sure, I'm not sure anybody's saying that the only thing that we, a donor can give to Willow Roots is canned goods. That were made in a factory halfway across the world or across the country.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying what he, what he's talking about there, I'm not necessarily advocating.
No, I, I understand, this is a spirited discussion and this is all good, I mean, this, this is what we should be talking about. As you can see, I've formed some views on this, but I'm not, I'm just one person.
Yeah, yeah, that language would prevent us from distributing meals that like we have received from the platter or the Stissing House. Loose on the loose, so. That language would prevent us from doing that.
Nelson, do you prepare?
No, no, which, no, no, they cook it and we give it out.
Right, so all we have to do is take the or distributed part out and then it, then it's alright.
Correct.
That's what I see.
As long as it comes from a border health approved kitchen, that there's no problem, that's. They don't need a license. As long as it's a border health approved kitchen, they can distribute it.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, that we just take out or distributed out of paragraph C. They can, we can get prepared meals from wherever, anywhere, and they can distribute it, what? We don't want them is to open up a kitchen there and actually do the cooking and distribute the meals there, and I don't think they do that.
The Duchess County website, they're listed as a food distribution. So they don't need any licenses or anything.
Right.
It seems to me if Vicky wants to make a lasagna for all the poor folks in town.
I don't have an approved kitchen anymore, I did for years, I don't have one now, so.
Well, I'm saying, I, I wouldn't care, you make me a lasagna, I'm just kidding, sorry.
No, I'll make you some, Peter.
Okay, so. So closure traffic, so scroll down so we can see E and following during the period.
I had a question about F. And if we put in that it's can be. Any day, that'll take this away, but I think that the idea that going to the zoning officer to change the day. And then having to apply to us is just unworkable.
Well, no, and once we put that language in, but if they want to expand the hours. You know, what happens if the demand has increased, now they want to have, yeah, I'm, I'm not saying they're going to do that, but you know, now they want to have four hours on Saturday or whatever.
The paragraph we were discussing earlier would limit it to two hours a week. And at first we said Saturday and then we said Saturday or Sunday, but if you want to make, it could be any day of the week, I don't, nobody should complain reasonably if it's during the week. Because there'd be fewer kids running around on the streets of, you know, on the streets in the area.
Right, it would just be if there's an expansion.
Well, in the terms of hours per, total hours per week, right?
Correct, and the expansion in the duration or intensity of, you know, the, the operation. I don't know, we'll have to, I'll have to think about how it. Be awarded.
So if we take Saturday out of that previous paragraph and, and leave it up to Willow Roots to decide if they're going to do it Saturday, Sunday or Wednesday. Whatever, then, you know. F can stay if they want to increase the hours from two hours.
Right.
But we don't need it.
I, I, I would, I would, I'm going to change the language to increase. Right, and the hours of operation need to be increased, there's, instead of changed.
The word, the weekly hours.
Right.
So, I just have a question, if we stay two hours, is that. Would that be considered also including the volunteers coming in and leaving? No, it would just.
It's just the distribution.
Two hours for the just, distribution, right?
Yes.
There about the buffer before and after for setup and.
So would we have to include that, that extra time for the, in that two hours? I mean, should we? Make it so say it's three hours? So the people can say, well, they've been there.
Tricia, can you scroll back down to where we were talking about the hours?
Yeah, Vicky, the paragraph says that they can do cleanup ahead of time or at. Preparation ahead, paragraph B.
And not be included in the two hours?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I just. But that should be clear.
Should there be a mechanism that. Say that they set up doing it on Saturday, if they're going to change the day, should there be a mechanism to notify? The residents of Carla Terrace of a change of day?
We, we do all our announcements on Facebook, which they testified that they follow us on, on social media, so that's how we get the word out.
That sounds a good mechanism to me, I don't know.
It's as good as anything in this day and age.
Right.
Run up a flag.
Yeah.
Distribution.
Distribution day flag.
Could we include it on the town webpage?
Yeah, I think the town has had.
For that with the calendar, and I'm not sure, I think when COVID started, the calendar kind of stopped, so. They haven't asked us or we haven't submitted those hours, but we used to before COVID, so I'm happy to send something. For the calendar, the town calendar, if you like.
So, besides that, in Facebook, it would be.
That's public notice.
Right.
Sounds good. The event of ours, so where are we now? Okay, so that, no deliveries or trucks going through, we talked about that, that shouldn't be happening. Nelson, you said that doesn't even happen right now, correct? Deliveries going through Carla Terrace or leaving through Carla Terrace?
Yeah, where I said, the overwhelming majority come through North Main Street, one may sneak in, you know, something like that, but we do not tell them to come in through Carla, we tell them to come in through North Main Street.
Now, what is this now? I don't like this one, what, wait, is that only tenants of the accessory? I, I want to, I want to strike H, does anyone have a problem striking H?
Nope.
I mean, does that affect, I mean, that seems to me to tells Nelson he can't use the driveway.
Yeah.
Too much.
Does anyone have a problem with striking that? I mean, that sounds reasonable, have a, have a volunteer managing traffic flows, does it say also on Main Street? I'm, I'm actually kind of more concerned about Main Street with the cars, you know, backing up onto Main Street, we saw those pictures, one of the letters sent in. That someone should just be there to make sure the cars tuck in against the, you know, the shoulder there and. And just keep things safe.
That's just sort of the basic legal versus illegal parking, I don't know if there's enough room for say two hundred feet north. Of the Zayases, I just don't remember it, but yes, you could get in pretty close to. The outside of the white line where you're, where it would be, I think, more or less legal to park, but. But uh you know, if somebody's, as I said, when I had the experience at the drugstore, people stick out into the street and nobody cares.
Right. Well, I just have some, you know, having a volunteer just keep an eye on, make sure, you know, things are proceeding orderly.
Well, what's interesting to me is I don't think I've heard anything from anybody on uh North Main Street, either side complaining about this.
Uh, some, one person wrote a letter who was on North Main, and then we had some photos.
I missed those.
Uh, one of the Carla Terrace people actually took photos uh from on the Main Street side of things, and that was in one of the letters. And you know, it definitely shows like a car just waiting in the traffic lane and somebody passing, going over the double L yellow line to pass the car that was waiting. And, you know, it just looked like the person could have tucked themselves in and it would have been fine uh instead of just waiting in the traffic line. So that's why I was saying, I I I think the Carla Terrace, if there's a sign up, you know, proceed slowly to whatever, twenty miles an hour or something like that. You know, slow down. I think that's fine. From what I saw when I witnessed the people on Carla Terrace, you know, it was really the one car, like we kept talking about, one car every five minutes, and it's not doesn't seem to be dangerous in my mind unless someone else feels differently.
No, I mean, look, if it becomes a drag strip, that's a law enforcement problem. I don't, you know.
Temporary sign is restrictions may, wait, of these restrictions. Uh, property owners should make an effort to stagger arriving vehicles to minimize. Uh, again, I think I'm going to work that so that it's someone, a volunteer on Main Street, property owners, oh, wait, what are these, L? Uh, renewal. Depends when we get this passed, if I want that to be twelve. I I feel like I almost feel like just like at the end of the year, like January would be a good time to like go over this again and see how we how we went through the year and where we are at with COVID, et cetera. Not necessarily twelve months. Anyone has any issue with that?
No, because that would be good because if we want the town board, they now have a committee to look at some things in zoning. They, we could add this to that.
Yep. Uh, definitely.
So now would be a good time for them to look at it.
Any violation of the terms, conditions, can you go down uh some more? Um, what what is this? All right, I don't know, I have no problem. Anyone have any problem with that? Uh, next, no further, wait, uh, issue of property on the period. I I mean, I find that somewhat reasonable, but it's kind of restrictive. I don't, I don't know, what do you, I mean, but no major home occupation, so we can still have the tax, no, the tax business. That must have been considered a major one, right? Do you remember? Remember? But that's.
No, I don't.
But it's no further.
Right, I think he's talking about the future.
Yeah.
Can't do a third one.
Third one.
Well, except even Warren pointed out, there's nothing in the zoning law that restricts the number of major home occupations. If Nelson wants to uh or Lisa want to get law degrees and hang out their legal shingle, you know, but.
Well, except this, I mean, we can put that condition on here, I guess.
Yeah, we can limit how many.
We can, but what's the, what would be the benefit to the the public, to the town of putting the restriction to anybody if there just happens to be just yet another thing where, you know, you just do a food pantry or people are going through, you have something where people go inside and consult Nelson like, you know, once a year for their taxes and uh whatever else they want to do there, that's that would otherwise be a legitimate home occupation.
Cause it might change the residential. Again, right?
Right. I mean, if you add four businesses running out of one house, doesn't that start to change the residential aspect of the neighborhood?
I guess, yeah, I see, I see the point. Obviously, it depends upon what kind of traffic that business generates. And if it's a if it's selling stuff on eBay where you are selling things out of your own basement that you've had for fifty years, then you, it's not really changing anything.
That'd be a minor activation.
Maybe it would, yeah, with no employees, no.
Uh, yeah, I don't know. I don't know how I feel about this, like, you know, should it just be up to to us or for some future board, like, you know, to determine whether or not an additional business would, depending on its nature, would.
Well, we can put uh no other occupation without approval from the board, you know?
Well, but they they need the approval without our say so in the in this resolution, right? I mean, the law's the law as far as approval of the major home occupation is concerned.
That's what I'm saying, like, they would have to come in front of the board again if they wanted to add something, so that board or if it was us or if it was whoever could make the determination at that point.
I don't know, yeah, I agree.
That seems to make the most sense to me.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Then you leave it open for maybe it, you know, it makes sense, or maybe it would change, you know, for the.
Well, but the future board should be presumed to be as able as we are to put appropriate restrictions in, including denying the permit.
Exactly. Yeah, I think I'm going to strike that too. All right, well, that's it. There was a small thing at the bottom, Jane's name was on there, we're going to take that off, obviously put Peter on.
Thank you.
So I have homework. Does anyone have any other uh comments about this application or the resolution? What's what's that?
Say hi to Warren when you talk to him.
Yes, yes, I will.
Tell him we missed him.
Well, he was, he just emailed, or I think just the whole snafu with the invitation, because he had emailed just before seven o'clock about the invite, you know, so he was ready to come and then we, I think we lost him when the the whole problem happened. Um, all right, so thank you, uh, Mr. Zeiss.
Thank you, everyone.
You definitely would like to thank you, and it's been a hard guy, hard thing for you guys, and we appreciate your time and hasn't been easy for us too. It's been very stressful. But on a good note, we became grandparents today, so uh we just had a little Reni Amato from uh just was born, started two, seventeen, eight pounds, seven ounces. So not that I don't care about this meeting, but it really wasn't the highlight of my day. And um, but but I, we appreciate you guys, and I know this has got to be hard on some of you because you've been so great to us and we really appreciate it, and we hope to make you proud. We really want to make you proud of us and hopefully you don't need us anymore. You know, maybe in a year.
Unity.
Indeed, I think we're all grateful for that, and it's sort of too bad that there's a need, but that's where we are.
You know, we just, unfortunately, we had one of our members, and you should know this because one of our members that we delivered to um wasn't feeling well. And we delivered to him every week and um I had to go pick up my granddaughter because my daughter was going into, you know, labor and whatever. And um he he was so sick, and I said to Nelson, I dropped off the food inside his door, but when we called him, he didn't sound good. So we had to actually call nine one one on him. He was going into a diabetic coma. And he's in the hospital now. So like, so that's like, you know, like.
Had we not been in touch with him, uh as we do with all the other people we deliver to, you know, we we stay out, you know, we keep an eye on on these people in the community.
If we don't see somebody for a day, you know, a week or two, we'll go to their house and bring them food and ask them what's going on. You know, and and they'll say, well, we felt bad or our car broke, we didn't want to tell you. You know, we'll deliver it, so it's 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 great to know that you're supporting us. It's really important to me, really is, thank you.
Well, it's great to know that you're there, for gosh sakes. I mean, again, it's it's just a shame that there's that kind of need, but.
Yeah. But thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Bye bye now.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, so next, we already did the minutes, right? Uh, so the next thing, we we did not hear back from uh Mr. Birch. Um, so we'll wait to hear from him in the future. I sent around the email, I guess everyone saw about the town center coming active again. I sent it obviously to Warren and also went and researched, as you saw, and found some of the old resolutions. I still have to track down all the resolutions. There's like so many addendums to that. Uh, but obviously, the uh most important point is that the two thousand and fourteen resolution did not change the completion date requirement, which was May of two thousand fifteen. So that resolution, that uh approval has expired. So they have to come before us no matter what, and I I talked to Drew about it and he knows what's up and uh agrees, and uh they, so when they come, uh, they're going to have to come back before us. They have to straighten out what's going on. Is it a rental? Is it a condo? Did they do the things they were supposed to do uh with the state, with the condo, et cetera, et cetera, you know? So convoluted with so many different permutations, they they have to need everything out. Um, and there's still also some sort of, I believe, I don't know if it's ever been resolved, there was an issue with the uh assessor's office with some of the land not being counted uh towards the tax rolls and it is, so it's going to be, you know, a bit to unwind all that and make sure things are lined up. And beyond that, I don't know, was there, there was nothing else on the agenda, right, Tricia? I can't even remember. I don't think there is. Does anyone have any, any other business? Drew, is there any other business uh you have for?
Uh, nothing for tonight. You have a couple of things probably headed your way. Um, the ZBA's made a ruling on on expansion of the storage business in town, so that'll be probably headed your way soon.
Oh, yeah, if everyone, I don't know if anyone kept up on what the ZBA was doing with that uh with the Hobson, uh, was it Stissing? What's the name of it? Stissing Mountains Storage, whatever. The storage unit there on uh Church Street. Um, they got a uh in a variance and part of the variance is interesting. I I wait to talk to the applicant about this, the uh they allowed an easement for the town for a walking path to go from Church Street to, what's the name of that dead end, Drew, back there?
I'm not sure, it's off of Fire Lane.
Wix.
Lake Shore Drive.
It's from Wix, but they.
It's from Wix? Okay.
Um, and uh so there's an easement for uh pedestrian access through through that to that. So that's an interesting wrinkle and we'll, you know, we'll see if they want to build a building, uh I guess within twenty-four feet of the road uh was what the uh the variance was for.
I was at both meetings and Scott had pushed for that because he's on the Trails Committee and people already utilize it, so he had asked for that easement to be allowed um between the end of the dead end of Lake Shore on the west side of his property towards uh Church Street.
On the west side, all right.
So if you're looking at the front of the property, the very right-hand side of the uh property line, not close to the vet, but the other side.
Okay. Yeah, so that's that's interesting. So we'll see when's that come for us. That's all I have.
Michael, um.
Sarah.
Just one thing, um, I just want to say that um the town board is definitely supportive of the the uh town center housing going forward. And that we think that it would be a good thing, so we're hopeful that that can um happen and we get a finished project there uh with additional housing in the town, which seems like a good goal at this point in time. That's all. I I think it definitely has to come back and has to be properly reviewed and all the rest and straightened out, but um we we are certainly supportive of their completing the project.
And it would be good to have that that piece of property.
Yes, yes, exactly.
But we're going to do, we're going to do it the right way. We're not going to hand wave it away.
Right, right, absolutely.
And um and of course, the uh the um zoning committee was, Sarah, when did that suppose, I'm on it. Everyone knows, uh, and obviously any uh issues, when when are we supposed, you guys are supposed to work on it and then it's.
Uh, we're, I think at our town board meeting, we're going to finalize the committee, and then um we have selected the planner to help us with that. And we will be um setting about to set up some meetings in the in the fairly near future, yes.
And.
And we definitely want um input from people uh about what their concerns are and what kinds of things they think would be uh in the interest of the town in terms of uh looking again at our zoning.
Yeah, and I think everyone just try to pick back through your memories of of issues that have come up and where we could tweak things and fix things that need to be fixed. And I think I already reported, right, if everyone uh noticed uh on the uh town board meeting, they hired BFJ to be the planner, which is.
Yeah.
So. Uh, all right, uh, with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone very much. Sorry for the snafu, and we'll.